Are looking at redesigning the seventh and eighth grade teams to, right now, we have a seventh grade team and eighth grade team and a split seventh and eighth grade team. We'd like to redesign the seventh and eighth grade teams to ensure that there are 90 minutes of ELA and 90 minutes of math. So the two teams will have two ELA teachers, two math teachers, one social studies and one science teacher. We would be reducing the science and the social studies to do that from the split team right now. We are also reducing one STEM section at Webster Middle School to replace it with a foreign language. We are hiring an additional counselor and an additional academic interventionist and re-instituting band and chorus. Over at Bartlett, we'd like to hire an academic interventionist. And we allocate one special education teacher to life skills due to increased enrollment numbers. So it's important to note that this year we have not had our libraries filled with physicians. FY22, we're not proposing to fill those positions. We're really trying to focus on the fact that we know that students, any student, has probably lost some ground academically this year with learning models. And that's our priority is to close gaps and ensure that we're right back teaching core content and, you know, doing those kinds of things. I think it's important to note that even though we're not filling the library positions, we, all of our teachers and students have access to the reading materials and library does not serve as a special to cover prep time at the elementary or the middle school currently, or for next year. So this is our breakdown. Mrs. Perangeli, do you want to jump in?
Sure. So this is basically an offset. What you'll see is the new positions at top that we're proposing. And then anything that is being either reduced or eliminated down the bottom to come up with net. So on the left-hand side, you'll see at Park Ave, we have the adjustment counselor, the three special education teachers, and the academic interventionist. At middle school, we have the adjustment counselor, an academic interventionist, foreign language, and then three Paris. And now, and I think that's a mistake. Paris, I don't believe should be there. And then at Bartlett High School, we have the academic interventionist. And then we have the positions down the bottom that are being reallocated or removed to offset the net. So I'll need to fix this slide and make that adjustment by 75,000. It's also important to note that up until now, with the addition of academic interventionists, they have solely come out of Title I. So now the district, the LEA, would be picking up those additional funds for the academics because we leveled Title I in the budget.
Another piece about the power professionals is that we will be re-instituting a journey para at all three schools. And Compass will return to Park Avenue. So here's a quick snapshot on a historical view on our curriculum renewal line and our professional development line. I am sure that you've seen very robust expenditures and use of these items. And again, had we not been doing that, I think that we would have been in a very, very, very tenuous place when COVID hit. I'm very grateful that we had the amount of resources and we could not, not, it wasn't turning a switch, but we were able to create a strong program with a stronger foundation because of that. So our enrollment has definitely been impacted by COVID-19, primarily at the kindergarten and preschool levels and the high school level. So this is just a snapshot over the years. These are October 1st dates, numbers that get reported to the state for funding. This is our projected enrollment for next year. So this is a pretty busy slide. I'm going to kind of walk you across it this way. Can you see my arrow?
No.
Okay. So if you read it horizontally, pre-K, 46 students. This is currently what we have. We have two pre-K classrooms and one sub-separate. And then we have an average class size currently, and right now with splitting kids in half, those are our average numbers of how many people are in person. Everything in blue is what we're proposing for next year. We anticipate more than 46 students, 50-plus students, hopefully more. We're not changing the model. We're going to have two classrooms, two pre-K classrooms that are integrated and one sub-separate. Now, if you do kindergarten, we see 98 students. We currently have six classrooms during the pandemic. We have decreased a classroom due to enrollment this year. Their average size is 16 students, about eight in person. Next year, we are going to have seven classrooms, and we're predicting that many students will be coming back to kindergarten 150-plus. Average class size for next year for kindergarten will be 21. First grade, currently, we have 148 students. We have seven classrooms. Average class size is about 21, 11, 10, 11 students in person. This is not taking into consideration how many students are staying full remote. These are just broadband average class size numbers for any teachers who are on. These are not taking into consideration the students that are not sitting, that are logging in only. So again, we'd have 140, we predict about 140 students for first grade next year. Average class size, seven, seven classrooms. Third grade, 138 students currently, currently six classrooms, around 23 students, 11 in person. And next year, we're predicting 142 with the need for seven classrooms, average class size, 20 students. This year, we have 153 fourth graders. We have eight fourth grade classrooms this year. Average class size, 19, 10 in person. Next year, we're projecting about 138 students. We'll go back down to six classrooms with an average class size of 23. Any questions on that slide before I move on? And then we have the middle school. And the middle school has a three-two-person team currently with 148 fifth graders. Average class size is 25, 10 to 12 students in person. There will be about 153 students next year. The same model will exist. Three-two-person teams with an average class size of 25. Sixth grade, same thing. Currently, they have 152. It's a three-two-person teams. They will have estimated 148 students. And average class size will be 25. The seventh and eighth grade teams are what are, we're proposing to change. They currently have one four-person team and one split team on seventh grade. Next year, we're proposing a six, one-six-person team, which would consist of two ELA, two math, one science, and one social studies with an average class size of 26. So students would spend 90 minutes, they would either, they would have the same ELA and math teacher. They'd be like two teams with the ELA and math teachers. And then the social studies and science teachers will teach all the students. And the same model for eighth grade, projected 129 students, average class size 22. Bartlett High School, their current enrollment is in the black and their projected enrollment is in the green by class size. So I'm not going to read all of this, but we wanted to give this to you. This is currently the number of teachers in each department at the high school, the courses that they teach, the total student enrollment and average class size. So you have an idea on what we're offering our students. Here's a snapshot from our 2019 report card on the, our student populations. And I use this to show that our student populations, we service a lot of high-needs students and economically disadvantaged students. And English language learners are increasing. We believe all students can learn and we want to provide access to rigorous coursework for all of our kids regardless of their, their background. So I wanted to just give you that snapshot and a snapshot on the graduation rates and dropout rates. We have seen a slight increase with our graduation rates. I'm very worried about what's happening with our high school students currently with attendance and dropout. I can't see the bottom of the slide on the screen, but we have had a much higher number of students dropping out because they're not attending at the high school. So we are working with our family liaison and principals and these counselors on trying to do everything possibly, possibly to keep students in school. And I do believe the vocational programs that we are anticipating bringing are going to help us greatly. This is a snapshot of where do Bartlett High School students go? And I just want to note that not all of our students, because we were in remote, filled out their senior forms last year. So this isn't a full picture for 2020, but we have students going to four-year, two-year colleges. And you can see the, the historical view. So going back to our counselors, this may not be how the caseloads balance out, but that's an average caseload for our counselors at our schools. What we're, in blue is what we're proposing for next year. Given, given the year that everyone has had, I really am advocating for increasing our counselors. And we are taking a close look at our counseling models. The model that we have, we have one counselor who really is designated for our substantially separate programs. Seems to work really well. So these, these are again, average caseloads of students. Special education, we kind of already went over this. This is again, the breakdown of how many teachers and what we would have. And in blue would be what we'd be proposing for next year. Our model for special, for pre-K, we're not proposing to change it. So our substantially separate programs at Bartlett, I mean, at Park Avenue. These are the number of teachers, the caseload, projected caseload for next year. As I stated before, we are in the process of reconfiguring the learning center over at Park Ave Elementary School. And so that it services more students, more as a three-four resource room. And can you guys see the bottom of the screen? I can't. Okay. And here's the new proposal for the resource rooms, the average students that one teacher would service for grades one, two, three, four. And then these are inclusion, this is the inclusionary model. Currently, we have a .5, somebody who splits between kindergarten and first grade. We're proposing to have one person designated just for kindergarten for special education, more of a proactive model. And putting two teachers at first grade and two teachers at second grade. So the caseload's low, so the explicit direct intervention is teachers are really able to support the students. And in third grade, we're proposing to keep the model the way it is with one teacher, one special education teacher, and one inclusionary parent. Webster Middle School, these are the substantially separate programs for Webster Middle School. We're not proposing to make any dramatic changes there. And this is the model of the Webster Middle School inclusion and resource programs. They have a grade five, six resource room and a grade seven, eight resource room. They have one inclusionary teacher at each grade level with Paris, and we're proposing to keep that the same. At Bartlett High School, they have these programs. We are proposing a reduction of one quest teacher and moving one special educator into the life skills room due to enrollment. And we have an 18 to 22 transitional program, and we have three inclusionary special education teachers. Mrs. Barris, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to just do a quick, so that quick overview of this slide?
Or, excuse me. I, we just added this in terms of being able to see statistically where things fall in terms of the students that we service and the types of disabilities that we are programming for in the district. Our, our special education rate really hasn't, it's really been steady, I would say, in the last two to three years. We are above the state average. The state average is about 18 and a half percent, I think, the last time I looked. And the newest information we have is that we are about 22.1% of the, of all of our students who are eligible for special education. So our, our largest disability group at this time actually are students with autism. And you typically do see students with, you know, specific learning disabilities and communication disabilities really being the largest groups. But in our, in our district, you know, the, we have a significant number of students who are on the autism spectrum. And communication disabilities, it's very common, especially at the developmental level, for that to be, you know, the highest disability group. Out of all of our students, we have currently 445 students that we have as active in our power school special programs. And that, out of that, 93 of those are communication disabilities. You can see the rest. I don't need to necessarily go through all of this specifically, but we do have also, I think, a higher rate of students with multiple disabilities and neurologic disabilities than you would typically see in a, in a small district. So, you know, we are programming for, I think we have a lot of high-needs students. You can see by our cohort numbers, for cohort C, that, you know, we, we have a significant amount of students that we program for that have high needs. And you can also tell through, you know, through the budget process and seeing the, the numbers of, of people that we have as paraprofessionals and ABA support staff, that we really are rising to the needs of all of those individual students. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about this. Our initial referrals to date, we had 51 initial referrals. That is like slightly under where we, we are typically around this time of year. It could be related to the pandemic, but I think also, you know, despite, you know, having different models of instruction, I think that, you know, we have seen a lot of work on behalf of our counselors and our teachers in terms of outreach and trying to work individually with students who might be struggling. So you know, I don't, again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kathy. And here's a snapshot of our second language learners, our EL students. We're proposing to keep the same model, but these are our numbers. So although we didn't have MCAS last year, this is our 2019 accountability classification. I think it's important. And the reason why we're showing the class size and the number of teachers and the courses that we offer and the amount of money we've spent on curriculum instruction and professional development, is that it all comes back to what are we doing to help kids learn and grow? And we were really on a nice trajectory upward before COVID hit. We were making substantial progress towards our targets as a district. So I just wanted to show these couple of slides quickly to remind us that we really are on the right path here. And, you know, a curve ball was sent to all of the, everyone globally. And we'll get back to it, but this budget really is focused on making sure that we have the staff to meet the needs of our students and really looking carefully at really ramping up our immediate interventions for students on top of making sure that we're teaching core content. So just quickly go through those, Monique. Mrs. Perangeli, do you want to jump in?
Sure thing. So this is a breakdown of our FY22 budget. Salaries make up about 80% of our overall budget. Our, our district tuitions make up about 7.7% of our budget. Maintenance is 7.8%, which includes custodial salaries. And overall, special education makes up about 31% of our overall budget. Now, this includes, it's important to note that this includes salaries, contracted services, tuitions, and supplies. So out of everything, 31% of our budget is special ed. And this only reflects LEA funds. It does not reflect any grant funding. Circuit breaker, as you know, is reimbursement for special ed services that we provide. This slide tells us, if you look at the first column, budgeted in FY 2021, this is what we budgeted moving into this budget year. We had projected our tuitions at 2.2 million. We have budgeted 1.5 million in our local funds. We were able to carry over with some strategic planning last year and budgeting, we were able to carry over 692,000. That is a full year of circuit breaker. That is our goal. We'd like to carry over one year of those funds. We were able to do that last year. We anticipated $642,000 coming in in FY 21 circuit breaker to give us revenue at 2.8 million. This allows us to carry over that total FY 21 circuit breaker. That's what we were hoping to do into FY 22 to help us. If you look at our actual to-date numbers, we are at 2.1 million with our revenue staying the same. So that means we're showing a surplus in our special ed fund this year to date. We all know that can drop on a dime, and I'll go into that in a few minutes. When we were prepping this budget, we took Friday morning, our total tuitions were 2.399 on Friday morning, which left us putting in the LEA budget 1.7 million using our carry forward. So our circuit breaker for 21, which is 641. I level funded that for FY 22 to come up with total revenue, which would allow us to carry over into 23 a year circuit breaker. Since we worked on this budget on Friday morning, after it was put in your packet, we got notification that we had two move-ins on Friday afternoon coming in. And then we received notification on Monday of another move-in. So we have three additional tuitions that we're going to have to add to the budget on to the tune of about $180,000. So that's how quickly it can fluctuate. It's a moving target. You know, we know things are going to adjust. This is why we have circuit breaker. But we'll go back and we'll take a look at the budget and put, put those additional tuitions in and keep updating it as we move through. Any questions about that? Next slide is school choice. This is our school choice funds to date. Currently, we have about, at the end, end of FY 20, we had about $600,000 in our circuit, in our school choice funds. We had planned on using this money for technology during the year to help replenish our Chromebooks and stuff for our students. The CARES money helped offset some of that this year. We were able to buy technology using the CARES fund. Looking forward to this year, our cherry sheets were posted for FY 21 just recently. And we were projected to get $65,000. So we've seen a drop in our school choice kids coming into our district. Right now, we have 13 kids. And we get $5,000 a student when they come in, so that's 65,000. And what I did is level fund that. We used $200,000 to help offset our FY 22 budget. We allocated 100,000 towards ABA tutors salary lines, and we used 100,000 towards technology. Dr. Goen?
And finally, just to conclude our very lengthy presentation, as you can see, we are really focused on ongoing improvements in our learning environments and student programming and staff development. And I want to just give a shout out to our district leadership team who has worked on, you know, this with us. The principals are in attendance of the meeting. The assistant principals are part of the district leadership team as well. Curriculum office, special education office. We, you know, we, we are presenting, I think, a solid plan of moving forward. And I think with the discussion of changing Title I right now, between now and the end of the year, we're not going to wait till next year to start to address gaps or, you know, things that we need to. We're in constant motion to make things better for our kids and our teachers here. So that is our, our, our presentation. And in your packet is the line item budget with the details. Both Mrs. Perangeli and I are available for any questions outside of the school committee meeting from the school committee members on that. And we're happy to answer any questions tonight.
Yep. And I, I just want to add that I also think, you know, it's really important to note, we have no idea at this point what our FY 22 revenue was going to look like. They just, they just tied up FY 21. So, you know, when we took this approach and we looked at this budget, we said, you know, we're going to be back in full swing next year. All of our kids are going to be here. We looked at a normal school year. And what can we do to really help offset any type of loss that any student may have had this year moving forward? So we understand that this is going to be a process like any other year. We're in constant communication with the town. You know, we know that there is funding coming our way. We don't know what that looks like yet. We haven't seen it. We haven't gotten dollar amounts, but that can also help us. But we, we just took a look at what we needed to do educationally, and we understand that, you know, we're going to deal with this revenue piece as we, as we move through the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Goen and Mrs. Perangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I know obviously you just stated that you don't know what the revenue projection is going to be on the town's side. But do we expect the town's going to have a substantial increase compared to the last fiscal year? Because it does look like last year's budget actually was a reduction compared to fiscal year 20, correct?
Correct. You are right. We've reduced about a half a percent. Correct. You are right. We reduced about a half a percent last year. We were actually below our prior year funding. So I mean, this four, it was a four percent we're projecting tonight. So really, if you average it out, it's two percent a year. I'm not sure what the town is doing, but if you look at the FY twenty-one revenue that came in that the state just approved, the chapter seventy went up, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So we saw an increase in chapter seventy revenue, although the school department didn't get it. We worked together as a team with the town. We knew going in, we planned well. We were able to use some of the savings that we saw in prior year to help offset some of our tuition. We had some decreases in our special ed tuition. So with everything going on, we were in a position to be able to help the town, give back a little bit to the town. And, and I think they're aware of that and they understand that. So you know, I'm not, I'm not projecting any cuts to our chapter seventy. I'm hoping that if anything, we're going to see the level that we've seen this year. I mean, enrollment is a concern moving forward in future years, but I'm hoping that we'll all be held harmless because of what's going on with the pandemic and everything. And, and you know, we do expect our enrollment numbers to jump back up once we're in school full-time. So, you know, we anticipate that growth coming back.
This is a fault. Do we give the full increase in the chapter seventy back to the town or do we split it based upon our share of the budget?
We were looking at a seventy thirty, I believe, at that time we were looking at. But we ended up giving them a little more than that. We ended up more. Because we, we had the reduction that we planned on. You know, when we were going into our FY twenty and we went to town meeting budget, we were anticipating a cut in chapter seventy to FY twenty amount. So we level funded our chapter seventy going into town meeting. Once we found out it wasn't going to be cut.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? I just want to say thank you for a job well done, very thorough and thoughtful presentation for us tonight. So look forward to the next review. Moving on in our agenda. And the next item is the approval of the Bartlett High School renovation project designer contract. Mrs. Perangeli?
Thank you. So as we stated earlier in the meeting, the building committee met on December seventeenth. We received proposals in and they were vetted out by our OPM. The recommendation was to approve Flansburgh Associates as our designer. We were able to negotiate with them and the contract comes right in line with what we had budgeted through the process. So we are asking for the school committee's recommendation to approve that contract.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School renovation project designer contract.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Lori, can you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, moving on to new business, is the acceptance of donation from Dunkin' Donuts Bartlett High School PBIS gift cards. I believe it's actually from a family who purchased the gift cards. Dr. Gogan?
Yes, the Moniz family who owned the Dunkin' Donuts donated a hundred dollars of gift cards for the PBIS incentives, both at Bartlett High School and Webster Middle School.
Great. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the generous donation of one hundred dollars worth of Dunkin' Donuts gift cards from the Moniz family for the Bartlett High School PBIS.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, can you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. And on behalf of the committee, I would like to publicly recognize and thank the Moniz family for their generous donation. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation from St. Constantine Helen Church, the bags of food items. Dr. Gogan?
Those items were donated with recipe cards and chicken noodle soups were donated for families.
Sounds good. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from St. Constantine and Helen Church, the bags of food items.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, can you pose, pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett? Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. And thank you to St. Constantine and Helen Church for your generous donation. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the donation for the Webster Music Boosters from Mr. and Mrs. Snyder in honor of Elizabeth Lahands. Dr. Gogan?
Yes, we received this donation of four hundred dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Snyder from Bellingham. And they wanted to dedicate this in honor of Liz Lahand for all of the wonderful work that she does across our community. And they were specific to say that they would really like this donation to go to the Webster Music Boosters to help our students with their singing and chorus and, and whatnot.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the donation on behalf of Liz Lahand for the Webster Music Boosters from Mr. and Mrs. Snyder.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, can you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett? Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes. Motion passes. And thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Snyder for recognizing of Liz's hard work for the Webster Music Boosters and the school, in the school community. The next item on the agenda is the approval of additional one point oh ABA position. Are we passing over this?
Yes, it can be tabled.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of a school committee member to the Webster Educators Association Contract Negotiations. Dr. Gogan, do you want to speak on that?
We, we received a letter on January first from the WEA president requesting to begin negotiations for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four contract. A school committee member can be appointed to be part of the negotiations team.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to appoint a school committee member to the Webster Educators Association Contract Negotiations.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate a member Adamopolis as our representative.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Lori, can you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payrolls and vouchers. Mrs. Perangeli, will you need some visitors this week?
Yes, yes, please.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item from the committee members? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, could you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett? You're muted, Linda.
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Naprata?
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.